Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Yes, sir.
Ready? Staff, ready? Ready? We're required to record these meetings, and I can't actually start till there's a little green light up there. And we can start now. So I'm going to call this meeting of the March 11th, 2025 City Council to order. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Kent McKinney.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we are so very grateful for the many blessings we have in our city, state, and country. We have the best of the best around the world, as bad as it seems sometimes. Guide us, the City Council, the city staff, in our work, and civil servants and around the country as well, including President Trump, as he tries to decide and guide us through a new path for our affairs. Bless our first responders, and the military, all around the world. Threats may be escalating in several places, and we need your guidance over all of them. In these things, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get to announcements of community interest, I want to thank everyone for being here. It's nice to have a full house. No live music tonight. A civic event. So let's start with Mr. Stuart Keneus with our announcements of community interest.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everybody. We do have a full house here tonight, so I'm going to be very brief. We do have live music, too, but that will be tomorrow night. For anybody who wants to go by Concerts by the River, that's tomorrow night, Curville Shriner Park. It's a free event, runs from 6:00 to 8:00, and I have been told that it is Rebecca Loeb and Landon Lloyd Miller, and they are Americana country. So encourage you to drop by and enjoy some free music. Their La Tapatia food truck will be out there, too. So if you want something to eat, come on by at 6:00 or a little earlier. And I think we mentioned this last time, but the Parks Department is still taking applications for the disc golf tournament that runs, I think it's March the 29th. Let me get my long-distance highs up here. March 29th, and it's $40 per team. So if you want to participate in the disc golf tournament, give them a call. They'll be looking forward to you. But that's our two announcements for tonight, unless someone in the council has.
Anybody have an announcement? Anyone?
Not this time.
All right. Thank you, Stuart. We're going to do something that we didn't do 30 years ago when I was also in this office. We never really got together and said thank you to people who deserved it. We would do resolutions. We would do proclamations, some of which I typed myself. But we never got together like this. And so I think this is a wonderful thing for not only city government to do, but for our community to do. And we're going to start with a Curville Kindness Award for Meals on Wheels. And so everybody who's involved with Meals on Wheels, who wants to come down front, I'll meet you there. I'm not. 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 We have two things for Meals on Wheels. Who has ever ridden with Meals on Wheels before? Just raise your hand. It's a wonderful experience, and I got to go last year, and we went everywhere. We went places I didn't even know were there. And I got to meet an astronaut. And I was very cool when I met the astronaut. I went. Let's start with the Curville Kindness Award. Curville Kindness Award was started, I think, with Dr. Bill Blackburn when he was mayor, and it's to recognize groups that are making a difference in our community. And Meals on Wheels are certainly making a difference. Let me read this Curville Kindness Award, and this is signed by the entire council. "The City of Curville recognizes Meals on Wheels on the March 11th, 2025 Curville Kindness Award. The Deeter Center's Meals on Wheels program provides crucial support for hundreds of Kerr County seniors. Last year, 200 volunteers dedicated 22,044 hours to Meals on Wheels, delivering more than 68,700 meals across the county. Meals on Wheels drivers check on clients five days a week, ensuring their well-being and referring them to other Deeter programs such as small home repairs or medical equipment lending. Thanks to community donations, the Deeter Center also provides essentials like fans, heaters, socks, supplemental food, and handmade cards. Meals on Wheels extends its care to pets, recognizing their importance to senior health and independence. Donated pet food is distributed as needed, and special grant funding helps cover veterinary care for homebound seniors' pets. Meals on Wheels success is due to the resilient effort of Bethany Miller, Carol Reed, and their valued volunteers, along with chef Shauna Ebert and her team, who prepare 400 meals each weekday between Meals on Wheels and Friendship Cafe. Together, these efforts combat malnutrition and isolation, making meal deliveries a highlight and even a lifeline for many seniors. They deserve a round of applause." Now, it's a doubleheader for Meals on Wheels today because we also have a proclamation. This one's signed by everybody, and this one's only signed by me. Making it much more difficult to read out loud. This is a proclamation of the City of Curville. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. And whereas for more than five decades, this landmark law has helped fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas, this year Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for a March Meals on Wheels Awareness Campaign, celebrated success and garnered support needs to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independent and independent health for the years to come. And whereas, a group of Deeter volunteers in Kerr County established a program to serve seniors both congregant and home-delivered meals 55 years ago, which became a part of the National Meals on Wheels Movement. Whereas, Deeter Center volunteers for Meals on Wheels program in Kerr County are the backbone of this program, not only delivering nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas, the senior population is increasing substantially, and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering, donation, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. Now therefore, I, Joe Herring, Jr., Mayor of the City of Curville, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as a month celebrating Meals on Wheels, and urge every community member to take this month to honor our senior nutrition programs, the individuals they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of an involvement in the National Meals for Wheels Celebration, I'm sorry, March for Meals Celebration, can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation. So this is signed. Thank you very much. I'm going to go. What I would like to do is first start with Brenda and make a few remarks, then I will go down the line, and you tell everybody about Meals on Wheels, how long you've been with the program, your name, and anything else you want to say about Meals on Wheels. All right?
I'm over. I'm giving you a heads up now. We'll start with Brenda.
Well, we so appreciate the Deeter Center Meals on Wheels program. It was started years ago, 56 years ago, when Harry Deeter started the Deeter Center with a mission to have a place for seniors to go, seniors to gather together, seniors to eat together. And I am so proud, as Executive Director of the Deeter Center, to know that we are still doing what his wishes and his vision was for us close to 56 years ago. So I love the fact that with the help of the staff and board members and volunteers, we are still doing that mission that was set up 56 years ago. So thank you so much for both of these. And March for Meals is our annual event that we do Community Champions Week next week. If anybody would like to go on a route, we're doing some really great, we'll do some routes. We're having good breakfast. I'm cooking breakfast every morning.
Yeah, she's cooking, we're not.
Yeah. So if anybody would like to do that, just give us a call, and we'd be happy to have you come and participate in that. Like Mayor Herring said, once you, if you've never been on a route, you kind of, and even if you've lived here all your life, you see a part of this community that you didn't know really was out there. So it is very helpful. So thank you so much for this. And I have two of my board members, two of my board members over there, so we've got a good, go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Wedling. No, I'm just part of the board. Brenda said it all. Thank you, Mayor.
Jeff gave me his time, so I'll talk a little bit. Mark Hoffler, the Board Chair. I've been on a couple of ride-alongs, and they, I'm disqualified because I don't know my way around Curville very well. That's an inside joke, I grew up here. It is a fantastic program, and Brenda and her staff, I just can't say enough. We deliver 70,000 meals a year.
This year will be about 70,000.
70,000 meals a year in Kerr County. That's a lot. If you'll stop by and do a ride-along, it'll, seriously, it'll change your life. I promise.
I am Bethany Miller. I'm the coordinator for the Meals on Wheels program. I've been here since 2018, and I completely love my job.
I'm her assistant. My name is Carol Reed. I talk to most of our clients on the phone every day. When she can't do it, I do it.
My name is Stuart Pippin. I'm one of the drivers. As I normally tell everybody that I train also a lot of the new people coming in, and I tell them that we're more than just delivering a meal, we are a lifeline to some of them. I mean, we basically have found people that have been injured, and so.
On the floor.
On the floor. I found one just recently, and we couldn't get in the house because he had it locked up. So we called the police.
He's calling me.
She tells me, okay, I'll call the police. And the police come out, and the firemen come out, and we didn't break any windows. We don't do that because they'll sue us if we do it. But we end up making sure the people are all right, and we keep checking on them every day, five days a week. And if they're, we're more of a family. There's over 300 people, and it's my family because I don't have a family here. So it's my family and all the rest of our family.
I'm Darlene Allen, and I'm a native of Curville. I was born here. And I've been driving about eight years now. I do two routes twice a week, and I can tell you that I get more from them than I ever give them. It is an awesome ministry. It really is. It's great. And the people really appreciate you. And their dogs love us, too.
They also bite.
The dogs are.
Okay.
My name is Dawn Church, and in February, I celebrated my 20th year of delivering Meals on Wheels. I came here as a widow. My husband was killed in an accident, and I knew nobody in Curville, but I knew I wanted to live in this town because a friend of mine said, to decide where you want to live, visit the bank, visit laundering, different businesses to see what kind of people that are there. And I can tell you with all my heart, I love Curville, and it's the only place, including where I was born, that I have deep roots. And I think it would take a lot to get me to leave. I love doing Meals on Wheels. I love the Deeter Center. They're my family. And just try to get me to not go.
Hi, I'm Beth Johnson. I've been with the Deeter Center five years. I deliver a route. I also bake something for everybody on my route every Wednesday. They get a homemade something. I've even followed some of them as they've left and gone to nursing homes or whatever, and I still go visit them, and I take them their little treat dessert or whatever. I also do intake assessments and reassessments, and I'm forever, if there's something out there that I think the Deeter Center can use, I'm forever saying, would you like to donate to the Deeter Center, please? They get food and other things that way.
Thank you.
I'm Billy Barrier, and I don't know how long I've been delivering meals, but it was after I retired and after COVID. But I do two routes a week, and I also help in the kitchen. And so, and I just love all my clients, and their pets really love me because I buy my own treats. They get extras. Some of them get too fat and have to get off of them.
I get a call.
It is a worthwhile program, and it just brightens a lot of days, including mine.
I'm Justin McClure. I've been delivering for Meals on Wheels for, I thought it was, I thought I was getting close to five years, and I had to go ask to make sure I wasn't embellishing my story. I've been delivering a little bit over five years, and it's much more than just the food that we bring to these folks. A lot of them, we're the only people that they see on a daily basis. And so it makes you, as a driver, A, makes you appreciate how you need to have things straight with your families before you get to the point of not having anybody around you, you know? And those people on my route have stepped in and become my grandparents. And so all the old folks in my life have already passed and gone on, and so I adopted a whole new route of people, and some of them come in and go out of our routes. But it's the relationships outside of the food and checking on those people just to make sure they're okay every day. It's the highlight of my Friday, and I know it'll be the highlight of yours. All you got to do is come and drive.
I'm Leslie McClure. I'm a board member, and I joined the board because my husband was a driver, and I could truly see the impact that it made in his life, and then I get to know volunteers, and I can see the compassion. And then sometimes I'm his answering service for when his adopted grandparents call looking for him. And it's made a huge impact, not only in our community, but in our lives as well. We hope that you join.
Aren't you proud of these people? And everybody smile.
You like each other.
One, two, three. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you so much.
One day, 17th, tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'll see you on the 17th.
Next, we're going to honor the Daughters of the Republic of Texas.
If you're with the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, please join me up front. Come on up. All right. What I'll do, if it's okay, is I'll read this proclamation, and then we'll go down the line, and you talk about your involvement, how long you've been involved, of course you knew, and anything else you want to talk about, about the Daughters of the Republic of Texas. For those who don't remember, after a little bit of a conflict, Texas was its own republic. Started about 1836. And you may also not know that I'm interested in history, and I enjoy honoring your work. Let me read this proclamation. "Whereas, the Daughters of the Republic of Texas was organized in 1891 to perpetuate forever the memory of the Texas pioneer families and the soldiers of the Republic of Texas. And whereas, the Joshua D. Brown chapter, chartered in January 1996 in Curville, is one of over 100 chapters in the state of Texas and comprised of many Daughters of the Republic of Texas who resided in the city of Curville. And whereas, on March 2nd, 1836, the Texas Declaration of Independence was signed at Washington on the Praze. And whereas, on March 6th, 1836, the Alamo fell, and all Texian defenders died for the cause of Texas independence. And whereas, on March 27th, 1836, about 400 Texians fell at Villa." This doesn't go on to say that we actually won, so we did. Now therefore, I, Joe Herring, Jr., Mayor of the City of Curville, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Texas History Month in the City of Curville, and urge all citizens to join with me this month in honoring our Texas heroes and proudly displaying the Texas flag." Thank you. I'm applauding.
I'll start by saying I'm Martha Pollard, and my ancestor fought at the Battle of San Jacinto. Meanwhile, Mayor Herring and I grew up here together. I'm a few years older than he is, though, and I'd like to let you know that this is our current president here at the end of the road. This is Jan England, and I thought I would introduce her to you. Jan?
Thank you.
Can you say something?
And I'll let Nancy go ahead.
Nancy Wilson, proud to be a member, seventh-generation Texan.
Rebecca Palmieri, and I'm a fairly new member, and I was so happy to find that I don't have just scoundrels in my background, that I also have three great, great, great uncles that fought at San Jacinto.
Oh, my. Three. Wow.
And they got land grounds.
Oh, mine, too.
Yeah.
Thank you for everyone being here, and it's wonderful to live in the state of Texas and its historic history, that so many people are envious of our story of how Texas was a country and then became a state. I'm a descendant of Thomas Jefferson Rusk, who, along with Sam Houston, became first senators when Texas became a state, and went, they went to Washington to serve. My ancestor was at Washington on the Bressos and was also at San Jacinto in the battle that they won. So the Texas Legislature in 2003 passed legislation proclaiming March as Texas History Month. And so our chapter, Joshua D. Brown, celebrates that in a big way. We go to the city council meetings in our area and receive the proclamations, but we also go to schools and libraries, and we donate Texas books and children's books. We do reading circles, and we've been dressing up in historic Texas, early Texas attire, and showing the kids animal pelts and things that were popular back then, and the kids love it, and they are so enthralled. There's just not enough Texas history being taught in our schools, and we're hoping that that changes. So we appreciate being here today.
Let me give you this as president, and let's get a picture made.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Shady Hill Councilman.
I have no idea who you just said you.
Thank you.
How are you, ma'am? Oh, yeah. Good.
We are happy. Yes, we did. We're so happy.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Next, we have the American Red Cross. Please come up. If you're with the American Red Cross, please join. You know, we have the best.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not quantity, it's quality.
That's right.
They're all not quality. You know, I appreciate the Red Cross. I've gone through several of the CPR classes, and I'm even a junior lifesaver. I still have my little hat, and I actually used it. I actually saved a life. A father to son in the Gulf of. All right. Let's read this proclamation. "This is a proclamation of the City of Curville. Whereas, March is recognized as American Red Cross Month, a time to honor the humanitarian spirit of volunteers and reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas, compassion and kindness are the foundation of our community, exemplified by the dedicated volunteers of the American Red Cross, who provide help and hope in times of need, continuing the lifesaving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization over 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas, every day, these selfless individuals make an extraordinary impact by assisting neighbors in need, whether by providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort to families displaced by disasters, donating lifesaving blood for patients battling serious illnesses and injuries, supporting military members, veterans, and their families through the unique challenges of service, using critical skills like first aid and CPR to save lives, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. And whereas, a Red Cross support volunteerism and generous donations is critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, 'You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it,' and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore, I, Joe Herring, Jr., Mayor of the City of Curville, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens to support this organization, this noble humanitarian mission." First, would you say a common name, of course, and how long you've been with the Red Cross and any other causes?
Okay. Well, I'm Debbie Zabik. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross. I actually started by taking swimming lessons years ago and went through all that. I also was a canoe instructor, but I actually have only been employed by the Red Cross about three years. But I've always had a heart. I worked disasters years ago, and so I was very privileged to be part of it. I said, I love being a part of an organization that makes a difference in people's lives.
Amen. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kimberly Culver. I am the Community Disaster Program Manager for the American Red Cross in the Hill Country Disaster Response Area, which Curville is the center of that. We go north to Mason County, south to Eagle Pass, east to Burnie, and west all the way to Ozona and Sanderson. That's the territory I'm responsible for. And the reason I haven't been able to put my phone down until right now is because we're working on, we have an extreme wildfire threat in the state of Texas, and I'm working on sheltering, working to have shelters available for people if they're needed here in Kerr County, in Maverick County where Eagle Pass is, and in Valverde County where Del Rio is. And that's just kind of a, we've taken up most of my time today. And just one of the other things, just real quickly, we also provide free smoke alarms. You just have to request them from the Red Cross. We did an installation event in Ingram this past weekend and installed 51 alarms and made 17 homes safer, and we're just real proud of the work we do here, helping people out.
That's wonderful.
I want to say one more thing is that about a year and a half, two years ago, we started a program called Ready Communities, in which we're trying to integrate with the people in the community. We're working with the Deeter Center and Meals on Wheels. We actually installed smoke alarms in some of those homes, and we're going to be working with the Doyle Center, hopefully, if there's people in that area. And so we're also providing a lot of training for volunteers and really trying to get people where they're safe, and teaching them about be Red Cross ready, helping them in case, we had another winter storm, what to do and what to have on hand. And so we are working very hard in this community and throughout our entire jurisdiction, and we just appreciate.
We go north to Mason County, south to Eagle Pass, east to Burnie, and west all the way to Ozona and Sanderson. That's the territory I'm responsible for. And the reason I haven't been able to put my phone down until right now is because we're working on, we have an extreme wildfire threat in the state of Texas, and I'm working on sheltering, working to have shelters available for people if they're needed here in Kerr County, in Maverick County where Eagle Pass is, and in Valverde County where Del Rio is. And that's just kind of a, we've taken up most of my time today. And just one of the other things, just real quickly, we also provide free smoke alarms. You just have to request them from the Red Cross. We did an installation event in Ingram this past weekend and installed 51 alarms and made 17 homes safer, and we're just real proud of the work we do here, helping people out.
That's wonderful.
I want to say one more thing, is that about a year and a half, two years ago, we started a program called Ready Communities, in which we're trying to integrate with the people in the community. We're working with the Deere Center and Mills on Wheels. We actually installed smoke alarms in some of those homes, and we're going to be working with the Doyle Center, hopefully, if there's people in that area. And so we're also providing a lot of training for volunteers and really trying to get people where they're safe and teaching them about be Red Cross ready, helping them in case, we had another winter storm, what to do and what to have on hand. And so we are working very hard in this community and throughout our entire jurisdiction, and we just appreciate the city giving us this proper credit. That's right. Oh, yeah, I got another picture.
I'm trained to Blake, right where they've. All right, shaking hand of the councilman.
Oh, I will.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
We have one more recognition before we get to the fun business of city government. And I'm going to turn it over to my neighbor and friend Catherine Boyet.
Thank you, Mayor. Will the Community Arts Program recipients come join me up front?
Come on up.
How are you?
Hi, Roseanne. Come on up. There's plenty of room.
The Community Arts Program is proud to recognize Women's History Month and celebrate the creative contributions of notable women in Kerr County. From historic sangre fases to the dances in Rosely Deere's home, artists have been creating culture here for generations. Today, we honor these remarkable women and we thank them for their commitments and contributions. Isabel Vanegas, youth artist at Tybee High School and featured artist for art in the Municipal Buildings Initiative this month. Her artwork is right here. It will be displayed in City Hall. Isabel headed to Texas Tech this fall to study wildlife management, and her artwork focuses on bringing awareness to the natural environment.
When she says your name, put your hand up.
She's getting her wisdom teeth out right now on spring break. And her teacher is skiing at spring break right now, too, but her teacher is also being recognized. Alana Kochic, she's an art educator at Tybee High School and an artist. Ashley Valero, Barnett Chapel Church Choir Director affiliated with the Doyle Community Center. She's a talented singer and part of many local bands and a proud Shriners University Nursing graduate. Carol Arnold, award-winning pastel artist affiliated with the Museum of Western Art, Museum of Big Ben, the Gage Gallery, and the Carriage House Gallery, just to name a few. We are quite lucky that she calls Kerrville her home. Linda Abels, founder of the Hill Country Youth Orchestras. Amy Goodyear, Associate Director of Playhouse 2000 and Calo City Center for Performing Arts. Amy is an actor and director and has been a fixture both on stage and behind the scenes in local theater for close to 20 years. Julie Sintel, arts advocate and board member for the Hill Country Vocal Arts Society and the Symphony of the Hills. She's also been involved with the Hill Country Arts Foundation and the Texas Heritage Music Foundation. Jacoby Caldwell, songkeeper coordinator and recording studio director and educator at Shriners University, as well as a conductor and musician herself. Libby Horton, choreographer, dancer, and staff member with the Arcadia Live Theater. Libby works to elevate dance as a respected art form and is interested in site-specific work and local storytelling. Elaine Capers, local landscape and wildlife artist and Kerr Arts and Cultural Center Board President. Monica Lovelace, a 45-years resident of Kerr County and a proud native German. She is an art educator and an artist with the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center. And Roseanne Thrall. Roseanne was the Director of Visual Arts at the Hill Country Arts Foundation for 11 years, where she curated gallery exhibits and managed both the adult and youth educational programs impacting many people. And these are just their resumes. Their artistry has inspired us, sparked conversations, and enriched our cultural landscape. Thank you, ladies, for your vision, your perseverance, your commitment to bringing more art to our community. May your art continue to inspire, challenge, and uplift us all. Thank you.
I would agree you were missed if I didn't offer each of you an opportunity to say something. So as we go down the line, you could either say your name and any comments about art, or you could even pass if you want to. So I'll start with Linda Abels.
Music has been my life, totally. And about 40 years ago, I, my little girl, would, Molly, would you stand up? She now has a PhD in music and she is a college professor in Indiana and takes the baby with her every time she leaves here. But anyway, she was watching a TV show, and they had a group of children who had been learning through the Suzuki place to be able to play a stringed instrument. And she came in and said, "Mommy, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna do that. I wanna do that." Three weeks later, she's going, "Mommy, I wanna do that. I wanna do that." And I thought, "Well, gosh, we gotta do that." At that time, there was not a single string teacher in Kerrville. And I finally found a lady in. Fred is right. Fred is right. Yes, I put her in the wrong town. And told her what I wanted to do. And she said, "You don't know what you're getting into." And it was wonderful. I contacted the Suzuki people in Austin and told them of our dream, that we wanted every child that wanted to learn to play music could do so without paying for anything. Because we knew most children don't, they don't know when they're, whether they have talent or not, but they find it when they get a chance to play. And we found, it's amazing how people, where there was nothing, started coming in. And they, and the newspaper was just fabulous, The Times. I talked to people there, and they said, "Okay, well, we're gonna have to put this up." So they put something in every week about the new music that was available. And I have seen kids' lives changed, kids that just didn't have any desire to do anything. And they learn to play with each other and to follow a conductor and to read the music. And it has changed the way they look at life, and they've learned a beauty that they never would have known. And this community has supported us at every turn, every turn. And one time, we lost one of our teachers. She had to go back to the public schools, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do? I've got 40 kids that need a teacher. What am I gonna do?" And down there, raising my hand, I'm sitting in my husband's office going, "Oh, what are we gonna do now? How is this gonna happen?" You know, we haven't done all this work, and my phone rang. And Jacoby Caldwell said, "Hello, I understand you have a youth orchestra group, and I'd like to be a part of that if I could, and maybe you could help me get some private students." And I looked at it, and I, I got it. I was almost about to cry then. And she said, and I said, "How would you like 40 on Thursday?" I said, "Yes." Over 40 years. Wow. Over 40 years. And we have three campuses now. Kerrville still is the center. No child has ever paid a penny to learn. We provide instruments. We provide everything that they need, all the music, their outfits. So anyway, I know some of you have been helping us, and it's exciting. It's wonderful. And we'll have a concert. I'm not quite sure, since we can't do anymore at the Calo Theater until it gets repaired. And I thank everybody, people that didn't, "Oh, I don't know anything about music." Well, that doesn't matter. You know, kids, you know, beauty, and you know, giving people something that they can really put their teeth in. And little kids grow up, and they're all over the nation.
Thank you for all of this.
I'm Julie Sintel.
I talk too long. I know, I know. I could go on forever, so you're lucky.
I will speak on behalf of the Symphony of the Hills, since I am on that board, along with the Hill Country Vocal Arts Society. But the symphony will be celebrating its 25th anniversary season starting in October. I hope you all. I will also tag on to what Linda said about the children. The symphony has a program called Children's Adventures in Music. And in the fall, just before the fall-October concert, one of the board members and three or four of the musicians, George Eichner has done this for many years, go out to the school, to the third and fourth graders, and present their instruments and talk about how they fell in love with music and that particular instrument. And then, on the day before that first concert, 1,600 children come to the Calo Theater and hear the symphony play. So I think I have heard several, as they come through, several of the teachers, as they come through the door. It was this concert that inspired me to give a positive music. So thank you for what you are doing, too.
Thank you.
I'm Elaine Capers, and I certainly can't give a speech like has just been delivered, but I'm with the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center just across the way over here in the old post office. And I have been serving on the board for three years and president of the board for the last two years. And the programs that come through the art center that benefit the community of Kerrville and the area of Kerr County and the surrounding counties is just amazing. And the art changes often, and we give people the opportunity to show their work and offer classes to learn how to be a part of the art community here in the Hill Country. And I'm just very proud to be a part of the art community here in the Hill Country.
Thank you.
I'm Roseanne Thrall, and I represent the Hill Country Arts Foundation, but you might know it as The Point or The Home of Stonehenge. I see here in the crowd people who have been on our board before. I stand up here with you wonderful women, all of you I've met through other ways up here. We represent a wonderful faction and a part of Kerr County. People come here and they look at what we offer, and the arts are just stellar here. From the theater and HCF, where I work, is both theater, visual arts, and now the only ceramic studio open to the public. So if you guys have any potters out there that want to come out, have them get in touch with me. Because although I retired from HCF last year, they never really let you go. And that's one thing about a nonprofit, when you work with them and love what they're doing and you're doing this creative work with them. We've learned, get the kids young. We have our camp for kids out there. Get them young, because it can change your life. Everybody knows here, it can change your life, the arts can. It's an important part of the human condition. So thank you for that.
I'm Ashley Valero, and I'll just, I want to thank God at first, and then I'll just thank my community, because they're always just so kind. And they asked me to come out and sing at their events. I'm just a girl who likes music, to be honest. I love the oldies. I like to sing. And so, you know, anytime I get the opportunity to, I just, I like to go out and do it. And I want to thank you guys for the award. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Amy Goodyear. I'm with the Calo City Center for the Performing Arts, and I would just like to invite you all to please come to the theater. If you don't support things like the artists here and the music here and the performing arts, you could lose them. And so we just ask very much that you support performing arts, live art, visual arts, dance, music, all the things that are provided in this community. Yes, the Calo Theater is closed, but we are still active. The Calo Theater will be open again in August, but we are still active on our campus in the VK Garage Theater, which is our small black box. The next thing to open is Neil Simon's Drama Lost in Yonkers. Opens March 21st, so please, please come and see us. We have such a thriving, incredible art community, and the theater scene is no exception. So would love to see you there.
Hello, I'm Monica Lovelace, and I have been a member and a volunteer for the Kerrville Arts and Cultural Center for about over 15 years. Carolyn Keyes got me started with summer program, teaching children, cooking, I had theater, did dancing, and art classes, all to the different things. Also, Lanza, Lanza Teak calls me to help with something like we had our youth art show a couple, just a week ago, for a couple weeks with all the children from the different schools in Kerr County, bring paint, the teachers bring the paintings from the children. We hang them and have a reception, and yeah, it's a big event. We have lots of parents show up and their families. Yes, and I was surprised to get this award, so I will say thank you. And I must say, I also show my art at the Kerrville Arts and Cultural Center.
My name is Libby Horton, and I grew up in the Kerrville community. I moved here when I was 10. My first exposure to dance was actually through Art to Heart, the nonprofit program committed to showing kids about dance and leadership programs or just principles. But then my more general exposure was through Tybee Golden Girls. I made it when I was a freshman, and then I went off to Texas State and I got my bachelor's in choreography. And I was in Austin at the time, and COVID sent me back to Kerrville. And I wasn't sure when I came back what my story was going to be. A lot of questions were up in the air. Being a young person here, it was a little like, "What? Are you sure, God?" But through that, sorry, I'm a little nervous, God has shown me that I am a byproduct of all of the great and amazing things that this community has offered. And dance has really just opened me up as a person, and I've seen it through my students, too. I'm almost done, because I didn't know this was long-winded, but dance has the power to bring people out of their shell, to bring out parts of them that they've never seen before and help them discover their true selves. It's, I was a musician, too, so I understand that part as well. When you can move with the music, the body communicates to the mind what it usually cannot. I had a student come to me the other day who was auditioning for the Golden Girls, and she was unsure if she was going to make it, and I had only one lesson with her before tryouts, where that followed Friday. She texted me that night and said, "Thank you so much. I made it." She texted me that night and said, "Thank you so much, I made it." So, I want you guys to know that dance, even though it doesn't have a very big presence in Kerrville, yet, yet, along with all the many beautiful art forms that are so represented, it will have its place here soon.
My name is Jacoby Caldwell, and I blew in with the wind in ninety-seven with the Folk Fest. I was playing viola, I'm a professional violist, and I got to play on main stage with all the great artists there that first year. And I kept coming back, I could not get away. And so by the year 2000, I rolled in with my car, and I think I had a hundred and eighty bucks to my name and, you know, my guitars and my PA, and met Linda. And Linda took me in, my degree, I had been on the road, playing through Atlantic Records and stuff for quite a while. And Linda took me in, and my degree is actually in orchestra education. And she said, "This is what you're going to do next." And I just kept saying, "Yes, yes, yes." And the community lifted us up in so many ways. And I see some members here, I started an adult beginner orchestra years and years ago, and there's some members here, can you give us a wave? I know Joe is one, and Steve is one. Steve was on bass, Joe was on cello, Linda was on viola. It was just, just an extraordinary, extraordinary experience. And I see so many of you that have just helped with the youth orchestra and everything. In the way, yes? Just a lot of amazing ties here. I've worked with Clifton at Tyvee, just so many friends and so much uplifting creative spirit. And all, and people that say yes, that's so rare to find, that people will say yes to the ideas and what's happening next. So now, I teach at Shriner University, I teach songwriting, and I'm director of the recording studio. We have nine digital audio workstations of Pro Tools. We have an award-winning, Grammy award-winning producer coming in to help us for a few sessions. His name is Mac Damon, M-A-C-K. Mac Damon is coming. We have incredible audio people moving through, as they do. Quietly, you'll never notice they're there, but you will miss them if they're gone. They are all coming through to help our students. We had a mostly nonverbal student recently who's been working with me for about six months, all of a sudden come out, sing metal music, you know, singing at the trailhead. We have pop-ups with Conrad Wirt there, singer-songwriter stuff, all kinds of cool things happening. I just can't thank you enough. Our next artist is going to be a week from Sunday. We'll have Bernie Sluice coming, and she's also a guest teacher. We have the Flying As coming back, we have, you know, we've had Hampton Brockman. Just incredible artists moving through quietly and helping that trailhead, you know, move up and running. The food trucks, the people, Jeremy Walter, all the, all the cool stuff is happening. So come out some Sunday afternoon, bring a puppy at two o'clock. Thank you.
Last but not least, Carol Arnold. And I have had a wonderful association with the Museum of Western Art, been blessed to hook up with them a few years back. And I just can't say enough for this community, the support for the arts, and for this Museum of Western Art, which is a nationally ranked museum. Has its fundraiser roundup come, is open April twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. If you've never been to the Museum of Western Art, please go see it, because you will be astonished at what this community has there. And it needs the community's support, as all the arts do. Thank you all again, wrapping up, we really appreciate it. And we are very blessed by God to live here.
Don't worry, they'll crop me out.
One more round of applause, please.
I think you're safe tonight.
You have to promise anything?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Linda.
Oh, I know, I'm having a hard time right now. Yes, because...
Hey, Judge, how are you? Good to see you.
I think we're on, I think we're on consent agenda.
Oh, we got visitors for it.
Oh, yeah, we got visitors for it.
As we clear the, as we clear the chambers, let me remind everyone, we still have a public meeting to work on.
This is Phil Herring, junior mayor. Phil Herring, junior mayor.
I'm the junior mayor. All right, do we have any visitors that have signed up to speak?
We have one, Dr. William Rector.
Dr. William Rector.
Bill Rector, 705 Water Street, and I'm going to be very brief. I'm here to commend the city on something that I found is new, and it's a agenda and minutes portal on the website. It is extremely easy to use. It has meetings ahead of time, so you can put them on your calendar and plan your schedule. If you haven't seen it, check it out. I want to thank the city for putting that online.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next item is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda can be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for a separate consideration of item. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I do.
Which item?
I don't want to actually remove item 4A, but I do want to make a spelling correction to the word resolution on the second page. And then I'd like to, excuse me, pull item 4H.
All right, no, no, we're not pulling 4A, we're just correcting, requesting a correction. And then we're going to talk about 4H.
All right.
Anything you'd like to pull out?
I don't want to pull, but I want to make a, just for a point of clarification. There's a 4E, 4F, and 4G on the consent agenda. Those are all grant items, so that is not a cost to the city. There's been a lot of back and forth going on that we're spending too much money. This is not a budgeted item, this is grant, so it costs the taxpayers not a penny. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll spend money at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
All right, any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Anybody in the audience? All right, do you have a motion then on the remaining items, all but 4H?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda except for item H.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. All right, thank you, 4H.
Yeah, I asked to pull this item basically for clarification, because every one of the items on the consent agenda required at least a signature by legal as to form. This item 4H is also in agreement, and I would like to see that it is, it is at least reviewed and approved by our legal department.
Any comment?
I did look at it, and that's just an oversight, I didn't put a stamp on there.
Okay.
So I'll do that before we sign it, yep.
Well, you guys are what makes my world rock, so I'd like to see a signature there.
Is there a motion then on 4H, or do you want to...
I'll make a motion to approve item 4H.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it's done with the consent agenda. Item five is an ordinance which will be read in by Keesha.
Item 5A, ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, zoning code, by changing the zoning of an approximate 23.8 acre tract of land as generally located on the southeast, sorry, southwest corner of the intersection of Loop 534 Veterans Highway and Cypress Creek Road, FM 1341, from a single-family residential zoning district R1 to a mixed-use zoning district MU, and providing other manners, matters relating to the subject. We do have four speakers, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we get to the speakers and before we get to the public hearing, I would like to hear from Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. This is an ordinance to change the zoning from R1 to mixed use. Let's try that. Says zone change from R1 to mixed use. It is part of strategic catalyst area number eight, which does include multifamily and commercial as part of that catalyst area. So it is consistent with the future land use plan. There's that description there for the catalyst area. And here's the site plan for the project. You can see the multifamily at the top of the hill, and closer to Cypress Creek, there is some commercial proposed. The access would be from Cypress Creek down at the bottom of that hill. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their February meeting. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Do you want to have questions for Mr. Paxton?
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that it had been approved by P&amp;Z, at least on what I got here. Do you remember what the vote was? Five zero?
I think it was unanimous.
Five zero?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Paxton?
Well, I don't know when I'm supposed to say this, but honestly, I had to use this to read this. So I would just say that for those that want to present something to council, make it easy on us, because I can barely read where you have your Phase One residential tower for senior living. And it just makes it, you know, the other questions I had about where is something on your, your site plan here, which really just gives me little boxes. So, just for all of you who might ever want to submit something, you can dig her, please. No, I'm just saying, this is tiny. I'm not old, okay? This is tiny.
Any other questions for Mr. Paxton? All right, we're going to open the public hearing, starting with those who've signed up. Who's the first speaker, ma'am?
Joel Bryant.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Cut to the microphone, if you don't mind saying your name and address for the record, we have to record these meetings.
Joel Bryant, 1503 Carol Ann Drive. So, I have a lot of questions about this, issues with this proposed building. I mean, just starting with, with their stuff, like, you know, having a site survey, the environmental survey, wastewater survey, because my biggest problem is the fact that this is going to dump rainwater right down the hill into my backyard, into my house. It's going to dump it into the neighbor's house below me, and also the two farther away from me. It's, it's going to be a lot. As it is, we get a lot of rain, running, coming down the hill into the backyard. My house is fine at the moment, but I know my neighbor's house below me, they flooded into their living room before. So, I mean, that is a very big concern for me. As far as that goes, they've talked about 150 units. If you look at the scale of this, there's no way, without having a 10-story tall building, that you're going to have 150 units fitting into the footprint that you put there. And I don't want, I don't, I don't really want anything on the top of the hill. But, you know, that's a massive building in that, in that location. I don't think active seniors, like, that's the target group. Active seniors are going to be up in an area that is isolated, that really doesn't have any areas for walking, for activities, things like that. There's, there's really no room for that. And then, of course, yeah, 150 units with amenities and parking, like, all that stuff. There's, there's just no way it's fitting in that area. The last meeting that we had, they said they had no actual building plans, surveys, anything like that. So, I have a lot of questions about that and how feasible it is. For my personal concerns, the drainage and erosion, which I already touched on, like, this is going to be a massive issue for us. Also, the property value. Anytime you put any kind of commercial, mixed-use or otherwise, right next to residential area, it's going to drop the property value. By how much, I don't know, but historically, it's usually a pretty significant drop. Also, privacy. You're going to put in, in, you know, four, five, six, seven, 10-story tall building that's looking directly into my backyard, swimming pool, all that stuff. Like, I had privacy, not so much anymore. Anyway, that is, that's what I've got, so.
Thank you. Next?
David Ferris.
David?
Yes.
Please take, come to the microphone, please, and if you feel comfortable, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. David Ferris, Kerrvert, original, 1965. My parents got here in 63. Question is, is this board and other boards made it pretty serious bid not to allow short-term rentals? Didn't want any of that, correct? Correct. So now we're going to allow what? Convenience stores, high rises, whatever else you want, they want to put on that as a commercial site, as mixed-use, it could be anything that Kerrville may approve, correct? What is in it for those landowners and those homeowners? What are you going to offer them for their reduced? And I'm going to say my reduced. I am house number one on Cypress Creek Road. Whether you're leaving Kerrville with the last house on the left, or coming in toward the golf course with the first house on the right. So what, what's in it for me to have all this development right in front of me? What are you going to offer the landowners? I don't hear anything. No offense, I know it's not y'all to offer it, but I'm just saying. We made it a point not to allow short-term rentals, but now you're going to let, I'm assuming, someone not from Kerrville develop this area to bring in residents to live, to be in rentals, to accept their money, but we, as homeowners, can't accept somebody else's money that doesn't live in Kerrville? That's a conflict to me, plainly and obvious. So unless there's some kind of something for the landowners, some kind of compensation for their loss of value, I'll be against this. Simple as that. I don't want houses all the way up Tyvee Mountain. Who went, who walked up Tyvee Mountain? I know of one.
I would like to, but I haven't yet.
Where did the other ones go? I know I walked up it when I was a senior, and before. I don't want to, any big old, I know there's going to be a football field there, thank you to Mr. Bryant telling me. But I'm almost willing to accept that, because that's part of the school, I get it. But apartment complexes, all up and down that? Cookie cutter houses, all up and down that hill? Okay. Do we really need more of them? Yeah, do we need affordable housing in Kerrville? Sure. That's not going to be it, in my humble opinion. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Mary Contoys.
Mary? If you feel comfortable, state your name and address for the record.
Certainly, Mary Contois, C-O-N-T-O-I-S, 1501 Ford Street, which is the corner house from Ford Street and from Mary Frances, and three houses down behind the gentleman's house there. I didn't get a letter, because they only gave a letter to the first two houses. But the thing is, I have a corner house, and we're in neighborhood. And in that corner house, I've met my neighbors through dog walking, through sharing resources, and we want to share some information with the board here. And I first want to lead with this. In the five weeks since we've become aware of the letter, I have met many of you, other people within the city, professionals that are amazing people, thoughtful, professional, and are doing their jobs. I would like to encourage you to talk to each other, share the different... I would like to encourage you to talk to each other, share the different linger in, and see what happens when they intersect at Mary Francis and Ford Street. I have eroded pavement. I have a neighbor who had to put in a cement abutment, because in the heavy rains, whether it's a 20 a year or not, the water goes into her garage. So we have some concerns. We'd hope for other neighbors to be here, they weren't, so I, by being the corner house, I have a list. They've shared with me some of their major considerations. The water source itself, we've been reassured that our one fire hydrant for that whole neighborhood, because we're up the hill and requires extra pressure, won't be involved because, and I absolutely trust, the water's going to come from the other side, junior high side, the high school side. Then the, it's their sixth year of a drought. And that, those two hills, including historic Mount Tybee, and when you do walk it, you can come to my house for cold water, a cup of tea. Because you're going to trespass, go past the sign to get up there unless you go by Cypress Creek. I won't tell. The other one has already been mentioned today, is the fire hydrant, or the fire problem. Mount Tybee itself is a historic site. We have out-of-state landowners for the site that the project is being proposed for. The deadfall, the leaves, the trees that are all down. And I got to meet the Texas Elite Severe Fire Hydrant, or Fire Watch Crew ironically on Friday morning. I've been drinking from a fire hose, I haven't been looking for this. I went to do my volunteer Hell Country Master Gardener at the Coming King, saw all these fire rigs, shirts from Waco, shirts from all over. It's the elite fire group. And they were up there to do their morning constitutional and also pray a bit, because some of them had even been deployed to the Palisades. And they're sitting here, waiting, because we are in a severe fire watch. Texas is not California, that's why I'm an expat. I have a teetowel that said, "I wasn't born here, but I got here as fast as I could." And with that, this elite force is here ahead of the problem and doing everything they could. And I could not help but standing where we were, up on the Coming King, right across Sydney Baker to the summit and to the projected site and to the historic Tybee site, and said, "Gentlemen, keep an eye on there, because it has not been cared for for a very long time, as the rest of us are raking and bagging and doing all the things we should." So the other neighbor, traffic patterns, that's already been mentioned. So I sat there, that's what I do, I'm retired. And I sat coming out of Quinlan Creek, counted school buses, counted trucks at different times of the day, spoke with a lovely person at the. Is that my four minutes? All right, well then, let's just run it, I'll give 30 more seconds. Traffic patterns, projected target, or target population, night sky. I went and took pictures of the new buildings by Prok. I took a picture in the day. I've been reassured that through the permits, they have night sky lighting. Not if you're downhill. Not if you're downhill. I drove up there at night, at sunset. They have a 360-degree view, their neighbors have a view of them. And I believe that's what we're all in agreement, right? Okay, then, the other part.
If you wouldn't mind coming to a conclusion.
All right. Emergency response. I am a professional, though retired, senior care provider for Masonic Homes, Northern California Presbyterian Homes, Merrill Gardens, and I've been on those properties when they have tried to add buildings against a rock wall, because that's the only property they had and they wanted to add to it. I have been up at 4:00 in the morning evacuating people when water lines break because of the construction so close by. Please take that into consideration and follow this gentleman's advice. We want water runoff studies, we want fire wise studies, we want traffic pattern studies before you move on. I'm not saying stop.
And in conclusion.
I'm saying pivot.
Thank you.
So please, more studies, then we'll talk about it again.
Thank you.
Nikki Keynes?
Ms. Keynes.
Nikki Keynes, I live in the city and I'm on the opposite end of the city, but I understand the water runoff problems. I've had water in my house as of last year because of poor planning. But I also want to build on what each of these people have said. When I looked at the information put online, there were five letters of opposition out of 21, but some of these people tonight said they never got a letter, they just heard about it from neighbors. And I kind of, I find that unfair. I also read that supposedly a thoroughfare study, a traffic impact, and a parking study were done, but again, we're in serious drought and it doesn't look like we're going anywhere. What about a water study plan? A few weeks ago, y'all turned down the 1,150 home development and much of your opposition was based on, what are we going to do for water? This says we're, you're planning on putting in some kind of multi-use, multifamily, but that's still, as I believe your words were, that's still another tap into the water supply. And this is not the only sub-development or what's going to come before you this year. So I'm just asking that you really look at the number of individual homes or water taps that are going to be included in this. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, even if you didn't sign up, you're welcome to speak. Anybody want to address the council? I forgot to open the public hearing, now I'm closing it. All righty. Before we proceed, I have some small technical questions for Mr. Paxton. The property is currently zoned R1, correct?
Correct.
And they're asking that the property be rezoned to mixed-use?
Correct.
Does that mean it's possibly less dense in development or more dense in development?
It would most likely be more dense in development.
More dense, because it'd have more?
More units.
More units.
Correct.
Any other questions on that line for Mr. Paxton?
No, I have comments, but.
All right. Now's a great time for comments.
I also believe that the 2050 plan challenges us as council and government staff to keep the look and the small-town look with our hills and our topography and our landscape. So my problem with this is more about the change that would occur with what we have in this property. Not, I also am concerned about water and density and traffic and all of those other things as well. But I'm just not comfortable that this is a place for what it is you're proposing. And that's my two cents.
Any other comments or questions for staff?
I'll go back to Mr. Paxton. Drew, you don't, we have no plans or anything, we're just trying to change zoning tonight, is that correct?
You do have the site plan?
Well, I'm talking about building plans.
Building plans, no, we do not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, right.
I agree with Councilmember Seigerman with what she just said. Mr. Ferris, I'm not going to be argumentative with your statements, but I hear it in my profession all the time, too.
Which is what?
You asked for compensation, I'm sorry, but it's landowner rights. I mean, if they own it, they can do what they want to with it. I'm sorry? I'm in the banking business. So it's, you know, we deal with this all the time. I'm not disagreeing with you, though, either. But it's come up several times with things. But I don't think this is the right place. Tybee Mountain is a historic, I'm not from Kerrville, I moved here in '05, but when I moved here, I heard about it. I know the mayor's gone up the hill and I, too, would like to go up and see it, as long as I'm escorted by Chief McCall, so I don't get in trouble. But, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. McKenna, anything?
So the, well, there's, some of these issues that have been brought up are not as much about platting and everything, is it not? I mean, really?
So?
So the traffic, we don't know what roads you're going in, or we don't know. And of course, before it's developed, there would be drainage.
Yes.
considerations, those kinds of things would be dealt with in due course.
Correct.
The, the, the commercial part of this to be mixed-use, we have Loop 534 really for a lot of commercial already, right? I think, I'm not sure, commercial fits too much right there. I, I don't know that in the end I would be particularly against this, I would have to be have some, well, I'm not sure I like the mixed-use. I think maybe residential, and depending on how the traffic would flow and that kind of thing, but I, I'm a little concerned. I don't know if we need commercial coming down Cypress Creek, particularly when we got the whole corridor, really, of potential. A commercial might be better placed. So I have some reservations, I guess, until, not so much, I think the drainage could be addressed and R1, you know, I don't know how much. And really, we get these, you know, just a few days before we have this meeting, there's a lot of questions. It's really kind of, it's a, it's a big decision to be made and I would maybe have a little more time or, but I think maybe the commercial part of it is maybe my biggest concern.
Yeah, and I agree with everything that everyone has said up here. I also want to say that I think the zones are there for a reason and I am hesitant to change those zonings, because I think that they knew what they were doing when they put those zonings there in the first place, and it seems logical to me that it stay in R1.
Quite a bit of gray variation. It's kind of, I tried to go up and kind of get a view, but you can't really see really what's there, and we do have sort of a topographical map, but I.
It's 16 degrees pitch at the top, right in front of my house, it's 16 degrees.
So.
We have to record these, if you're there, we can't hear you, so, I understand. But if you have other comments, you'll need to come to my. All right. Counsel, you've heard from the public, and I've heard from you, what's your pleasure on this item? We have three options, approve, disapprove, our table until we have more information.
I move to disapprove, ordinance number 2025-06.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's many seconds.
Many seconds.
Any discussion? So the motion is to disapprove, ordinance number 2025-06. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, so vote. Pass it unanimously. Item 6A, request for a variance from a half-mile distance requirement per Section 3016 of the Code of Ordinances required between boarding home facilities. We'll start with Mr. Paxton.
There we go. This is a request for the distance variance. So the group home ordinance does require group homes be no closer than a half-mile to the closest other group home facility. The primary reason for that is so there's not a concentration in any one neighborhood. The request is from the current operator at 613, has a current group home. 617? Sorry, I've got it backwards, 617. The request is for 613 to open a new group home on the other half of this townhome.
I want to make sure that the public, the applicant, and the council is clear. Tonight, we're only voting on a variance. There are other issues involved with this project, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Does this go in front of P&amp;Z?
No, that goes straight to council.
The applicant is here and if he would like to make a comment, he's welcome to do so. But please state your name and address for the record.
Rick Perry, 405 Spring Mill Drive in Kerrville is my residence. I opened 617 Rock Creek Loop as an elder care, personal care home back in 2018. 613, which is the adjoining property, has a common wall to 617. Was able to purchase that, it's also being run as an elder care, personal care home. Different from what I understand of the boarding home permits, a lot of those deal with sober houses, that sort of thing. Whether that's a point conveyed here or not, we don't have anybody driving, we have no traffic to speak of, other than medical care that comes in and helps with some of our residents. I've spoken to all of the residents that were in the 200-foot radius. The house is well-received, we have residents who live on that street and have loved ones in the house. So it's just, it's given a great, in my opinion, a great service, a great option, one of the best options for seniors, the personal care homes. I think there's, in Phoenix, there's 30,000 of these. But I think it's been an asset to the community, an asset to the neighborhood, and I appreciate the chance to get to bring this before the council. Thank you. Any questions?
No. Any questions for Mr. Perry?
So how many tenants do you have there, residents?
In 613, it'd be four residents.
And they're basically in the same building, so to speak?
Yes, it's the same roof line.
And so, and altogether, between the two?
Seven.
Seven? So it's not like there's a big volume, particularly even at the two?
No. That's the whole reason behind the personal care homes is, it's a house setting to make them feel like they're in their own home.
What is the zoning there?
Mr. Paxton?
I believe it's residential plus.
It's R1 or R2?
Hey, isn't that a business that you're running there?
It is, but they are allowed in the, in the residential zoning districts. The only caveat is that they have that.
I thought they had to be in C2.
They can be in commercial districts, but they're not required to be. So they're also allowed in the residential districts.
Did this go before building board of adjustments?
For a different issue.
Oh, okay.
Not related to the separate, this is just the separation between group homes. Building Board of Appeals and adjustments was working on a case based on the building code requirements.
Okay.
Again, to remind everyone, we're only talking about.
Well, my concern would be later. What would happen if another person owned it, just fast forward 10 years, 15, 20 years? Does this, are you locked into being able to use this? And what happens when the next owner just wants to do something that might increase the number of residents? That would not be to code or not, I'm just concerned.
It, I mean, it dies with my ownership.
Actually, the variance would continue with the property, correct?
Written in stone with the property.
Well, I don't, since it's not a zoning variance, it's actually a variance based under Chapter 30 for businesses.
With a one-half mile.
It wouldn't run with the property, it would just be for this, this request.
And you have a limit on the number of bedrooms, too. I mean, you can only.
Right. I know, but I've heard of bad stories from other places. Doesn't have to be a bedroom, if you give someone a place to sleep on the floor and stuff, so.
Scary.
Well, I wish they didn't exist, but they do, so. Just questions, you know, come to my mind.
Any other questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing that I'm going to open here in a minute, because I remember it this time. But in our agenda bill, there's some specific criteria we have to meet, we have to determine to grant this variance. We must find that the enforcement of the distance requirement is not in the best interest of the public, or constitutes waste, or inefficient use of the land or other resources, or creates an undue hardship on the applicant, does not serve its intended purpose and/or is not effective or necessary. If at the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council grants the applicant's request for a variance, the city council may impose additional conditions on granting the variance such, where such conditions are intended to mitigate impacts caused by the boarding home facility and are in the public interest. So we're asked to be, make a very narrow finding on this project. I would imagine we're going to have other decisions, or the Board of Adjustments is going to have other decisions to make on this property. Tonight, we are merely talking about the distance requirement that's in the Code of Good summary? So, along those lines, are there any questions of staff? Well, let me, let me finish. Are there any questions of staff? If not hearing any more questions, I'll open the public hearing. All right, let's. All right, let's open the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Anyone wish to speak, please? If you care to, I mean, you feel comfortable giving your name and address for the.
Jeff Hunter, I'm director of Gulf of River Hill Country Club.
Yes, sir.
I have the unenviable position of speaking for my owners this evening. Rick, my apologies, Rick and I are friends, I certainly hope. Our concerns are twofold. I also have spoken with some of the neighbors that live there. We have had a couple of people wander onto back porches in that area. As you'll notice, the area borders the fourth hole at the golf course. To us, it's an insurance issue, it's a danger issue, and it could be very detrimental to those living in the home should they wander somewhere they shouldn't wander, which has happened previously. Having had a mother in a nursing home, I know this is a brutal issue, but we just think for the safety of those neighbors that express their concern to me and for the safety and our safety at River Hill Country Club, it's best if this variance is not granted. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Public hearing. Mr. Perry.
I'm very involved in this house and, and there every week. We have not had any of our residents in, since twenty eighteen wander onto anybody's backyard or into their, onto their porch. Now, this house, previous to me owning it, when an attorney from San Antonio owned the house, there was a lady from San Antonio running this as a personal care home, which was not under a boarding home permit. I don't know if she just didn't bother to apply or didn't know. And it was run very poorly. There was not a lot of, uh, it, it was, there was not a lot of accountability there and they had people wandering all over the place. And I heard about those stories and I met with all the neighbors before I opened this house and said, you know, I know this place has not been run properly and this will not be run this way. So, um, I don't know if that's in particular to what Mr. Hunter is saying, but I can say there was some bad history before I owned the house.
Anybody else in the public hearing? Yes, go ahead, please.
But first of all, this is going to sound like a love fest, but I know Rick does a hell of a job. And this has nothing to do about Rick or how he runs his organization, because I've heard nothing but great. To Elaine's point, Delain's point, excuse me, um, what also worries our ownership is once one is passed, the second one's easier, the third one's easier after the second one. What that does in and out of that neighborhood, I don't know. Right now, there's one. We don't want three, four, or five, or six of these in that neighborhood. That's the expression of my ownership, whom I wish wasn't in Florida and they had to do this, but thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Ferris, did you want to speak?
Just a common sense questions. Are the, the back fences all up to code? No fence, it's open to the fairway? Could you change it? City code won't allow fence? Just common sense question.
Any other comments in the public hearing? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. All right, we've heard from Mr. Paxton, we've heard from the owners of River Hill, we've heard from the applicant. We have a very narrow window to determine a variance and I'm open to the will of the council.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So, Rick, the, uh, who supervises your, or regulates your operation? Is there some, is state or, I mean, is there some kind of a?
Not required to by the state, we're just, uh, regulated by our manager that lives there twenty-four seven.
Okay, so you don't have any particular standards to meet or anybody to answer to particularly?
I mean, if there was an issue, they could call Health and Human Services and report any kind of neglect or abuse, that sort of thing.
Just curious about, you know.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I just want to say that, um, kind of like my comment about, uh, zoning being the way it is for a reason. I sat through a couple of years' worth of variances for the short-term rentals. And we finally agreed that we were going to put something in place to where there wouldn't really be the opportunity for variances. And I think in this same respect, it's zoned the way it is for a reason and I hesitate to allow a variance because with one variance comes another, comes another, comes another. And so I, I, I really have a hard time doing a variance at all to what's in place.
So, not to be contrarian, you can sit down. I think that that part of the code was enacted for group, uh, homes or those who are substance abusers or have a history of substance abuse. Because those homes seem to be in many quiet neighborhoods. But Mr. Perry is writing is not a, a sober home, a sober group home. But rather a home for, um, elderly people to be cared for in a very small environment, small, close environment. So in my opinion, the intent of the original ordinance was to separate. This is not that. So I could find where the variance was called for. I respect what you're saying, but I think there may be two different animals.
Yeah, and, well, I, I get what you're saying and I'll just reserve my comments.
Any other comments?
My only comment would be, you know, I'm, I'm remorse that you already have people in the, the home and the request is coming after the fact. That puts us on kind of in a, you know, uncomfortable position of having to say maybe no and the cart's before the horse already, you know what I'm saying? So I, I regret that, but if you didn't have people in the house already and you were requesting this, it'd be a lot easier to say, no, we're going to stick to our original rule because there was a purpose for it. So I don't, if, you know, whatever my vote is, I, I do take it very seriously and I do think about it very consciously. So just note.
I want to go back to the mayor and council member Hughes. We had sober living in River Hill because they're unregulated. You can do that unregulated. I think there's somebody in the audience tonight that caught them in one of his phones when he went over to fix something. But Mr. Perry has gone about the right direction to do this. He filed, he paid his, he paid his three hundred and fifty dollar filing fee. He owns the house, there's a solid wall right next door to it. You know, I live right across the fairway, the other side of the golf course from it, you know? We're not asking to approve the senior living, we're not asking for anything else. We're just asking to say, hey, can I have the other side of this house that I already own for the variance? But, you know, he's going about it the right way, in my opinion, talking to staff. Instead of just trying to backwall it and do it without, you know, registering or being under the radar, so to say. So that's, common sense to me is he already owns the house. Both sides of the wall. So I could get behind a variance on this one. Other things that come down the road that might have to, you know, codes and requirements, that's a whole different story, but that's not what we're here for tonight. We're here for a variance.
Want a clarification? It's not Jeff that's wandering around on the fairway, is it?
Don't you check his socks when he comes along, you know, he's got all over the house.
All right, council, we need a motion and then a second and then a vote. I'm open for either.
I would just add that I, I think, you know, there's technicality that it's two different pieces of property, but it's really one building. I don't see it as being such a big issue. I think that, uh, the distance, you know, they're not going to, the neighborhood can't be overtaken if you're within a half a mile. I think this is kind of an unusual situation, you know, if it was a separate house, if it was different. But we got one building and so it's sort of like, um, in one sense, almost wouldn't need it, but I, we got these two different parcels, but it's just one building. So I, I would tend to in favor.
Right, if there's a motion one way or the other, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion that we approve the, the variance in six A.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the variance as requested. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote. Three, all opposed? We had a mixed vote. And, and Shelley wasn't even here to see it. Passes three to two, Mr. Perry. More to come. Number seven doesn't seem to be very important, so we can just skip it.
Last but not least.
That's the biggest, anyway.
Well, we got some other stuff after them, but let's start with Mr. Rice. Resolution number oh eight twenty-five. You're listed as the, the lead.
I should not be on there, that should, that should definitely not be me.
All right, and I'm going to ask Mr. Whitler, who is executive at K-Pub to start us off. And remember, we've been here a while.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We're not used to that.
We're not used to it.
Brevity would be appreciated.
Okay. Uh, so mayor and council members, uh, I'm here today for anyone in the audience who doesn't know who I am. I'm Mike Whitler, I'm the general manager for the Curville Public Utility Board. Uh, we have Allison Boucher, uh, customer and, and, uh, community relations. Uh, Amy Dozier, assistant general manager. Arthur Kimball Stanley, our bond counsel. And, and then Stephen Adams, our, our financial advisor. And then also, uh, last but not least, Larry Howard, our board chair. So we're here to talk about this generation project that, that we've been working on, uh, very diligently for the past nine or ten months. I've been with K-Pub nineteen years and, and when I started here, uh, we were looking at the possibility of ownership in the Sandy Creek coal-fired plant, uh, up, up near Dallas. Um, so the idea of K-Pub owning something has been something that we've been looking at for many, many years, over twenty years. Uh, spoke to Bill Taylor, uh, last night and, and confirmed that. So the project that we are, first of all, K-Pub, our mission is to be a responsive and efficient locally-owned provider of safe and reliable utility service at the lowest responsible price. And those last three words are what this project's about. Uh, we're a public power utility and we are not-for-profit. We focus on having competitive low rates, reliable service, being responsive to our customers. Uh, we are locally controlled, our board members here are, are all local citizens and the mayor serves as well. We live here, work here and, and are interested in helping and serving our community. We're very proud of the rates that we have, we're, our rates are very competitive. Uh, this is a comparison of, of municipal and cooperative utilities in the area and we typically rank in the, the top three on this list. We have some of the lowest rates in the state of Texas. Our rates are about thirty percent lower than the state average and forty percent lower than the national average. And, and the need for this, uh, need for this project, uh, comes up because, uh, because we have a big contract that's getting ready to expire and there's, uh, a couple of things going on in, in the market. Just talk about our portfolio. Uh, we have a number of different sources of power supply and we did that intentionally to give us diversity in types of generation and the counterparties we deal with and also the terms. So we're never, uh, never looking for, or ideally never looking for all of our power at one time. Um, we've got a big load following agreement with CPS Energy that expires at the end of twenty twenty-six. Load following means that the, their contract adjusts, adjusts, uh, basically every minute of the day, they provide whatever we need. And so as, uh, people wake up and start turning on appliances and loads go up, they, they're responsible for providing anything we need. Um, we need to replace that and our two options are basically, uh, continuing with a power purchase agreement or this potential generation project. The market, the ERCOT market, uh, has a lot of demand, a lot of forecast demand and we're seeing increased scarcity, increased prices, and the lengths of these contracts are getting shorter. So this CPS Energy agreement, that was a seven-year, uh, agreement with a three-year extension. Now a long agreement is five years and you're typically seeing three-year agreements. So with the, with, with that path, we're seeing shorter-term agreements, higher prices and more volatility. Just looking at this, I think I've covered that fairly well and want to keep on moving here. So, uh, again, I mentioned demand in ERCOT and this is ERCOT's, uh, projection of demand. I think that's, this might be a little aggressive, but, but even if the growth is half of what they're projecting, the state is going to have a very difficult time keeping up with that demand. And we see this, we, we've compared this in, in our explanations to our customers as, as basically, it's like, it's like housing. And in housing, you can rent your house or you can own your house. And the power purchase agreements are like renting, renting your house. So our option one is to continue renting through load, load following purchase, purchase agreements. Uh, just like the housing market, there's scarcity, rent prices are going up. And, and it's getting difficult to, you know, prices are going up to rent and, and that's the same thing for the power purchase agreement. Uh, the option two is basically build our home, get a mortgage and, and, uh, own the project that serves us. And we see this as, uh, the best way to ensure stable rates. And we've done, we've done numerous scenarios, uh, uh, stress testing our models and looking at different market conditions. And typically, the option two results in rates about fifteen percent lower than option one. And one note, uh, that one of my board members, uh, always wants me to point out is we can't lock all, all costs. And so natural gas is still going to be something that will fluctuate for us and we will still be in the ERCOT market and subject to rolling outages. Natural gas cost really drives the entire ERCOT market. So if natural gas goes up, all the prices will go up and we would still be relatively competitive. So benefits of owning power generation, uh, number one for us is the stable rates. This is also, uh, part of, we're doing our part to support new power generation for Texas. And, and Texas, the legislature passed a plan to improve grid reliability a couple of years ago. And, and we've actually, our project is, is one of those projects in that plan. Owning generation also lets us offer innovative service offerings typically for more sophisticated commercial customers. And, and it basically has to do with being able to give large customers price signals, uh, from the wholesale market. Uh, the proposed plant is a natural gas-fired reciprocating internal combustion engine. Uh, it would be a hundred and twenty-two megawatt plant. These are highly efficient. Uh, when, when this plant, uh, comes online, it would be one of the most efficient plants in, in the state of Texas. Uh, they're able to operate during extreme weather, both hot and, and cold temperatures. They're housed in a, in a building and so, uh, cold weather is not a problem and they're, they're rated to, to operate at full power up to a hundred and fifteen degrees ambient temperature. The plant would be located outside of Kerr, Kerr County. Uh, you site these plants and you need to be in close proximity to fuel, uh, electrical connection and preferably a, a load center. And here in Kerr County, we don't have, uh, enough natural gas to power this type of plant. Water consumption on this plant is almost zero. Uh, we did numbers on it, it will. this type of plant. Water consumption on this plant is almost zero. We did numbers on it. It will take 6,000 gallons of water to initially fill the radiators in this plant, and then after that, it's equivalent to a house. Really, what you're using most of the water for after that is flushing toilets, not, not for the generation itself. And they can be built very quickly. Scheduled completion is June 2027. And I think at this point, I'm turning things over to Allison to talk about our communications efforts.
Good evening. So just to cover a little bit of the public outreach that we've done with K-Pub on the project, we've had an extensive public outreach campaign, one of those being presentations in the public. We've done 20 different presentations, and that has been with civic organizations, our employees, past board members, legislative representatives, all the way to the economic development. But specifically, out of those 20, we've had four customer-focused ones, and three of those were open to the public and hosted in our K-Pub boardroom. We had a, a power supply portfolio survey that we launched just to gauge customer feedback and, and get their opinion on, on the project. And we had close to 1,000 responses. We launched it pretty soon after we went public with the campaign, and we launched it the very beginning of July, and we kept it open through the end of fall. We had close to 1,000 customer responses, and we kept it open for customer feedback also after each of our public presentations that were done too. So that's why it was open through the fall. Reliability and low rates were rated most important, something that goes right in line with our mission. And 76% of our customers want stable competitive rates, even if that meant that K-Pub would make a significant financial investment and invest in this power plant and borrow funds. 80% of them also said that they prefer that K-Pub continue to use fossil fuels in our power supply portfolio. And we had just a lot of different resources for the public as well. We built a dedicated project page for the, on our website. It was called kpub.com backslash power. We had an ongoing FAQ that we published for the, the public, and we kept adding to that as we got additional questions, and so it evolved over time. And we also published recordings and presentations for people that could not attend any of our public sessions as well. And we launched a, a social media campaign called Your, Your K-Pub, Your Power. We had about 16 social media posts that were published in late summer months between July and August, just to engage with the community and inform them about the project. We put a lot of our FAQs out there too, online, on social media. And a significant amount of local publications too. We issued four staff press releases, but we had 23 total local articles printed in papers, ranging with the Community Journal, Daily Times, and West Kerr Current, as well as numerous online articles from the Kerr County Lead and even in-person staff presentations. So a lot of different publications and ways that we informed our customers throughout this campaign, as well as our two largest marketing publications that we publish each year. We do a community report for K-Pub and a quarterly newsletter called The K-Pub Energy Hub, and we put those articles as this project was the, the highlight in each of those featured articles too. If y'all have questions about the public outreach, I'm happy to answer them for y'all. If not, for time, we'll move on to Amy then. Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you. You've been busy.
Yes.
No worries in one.
Yes, very much so.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Moving on to key accomplishments to date, I'd like to highlight that these accomplishments go back almost a year to May of 2024. That's when we filed a notice of intent with the Texas Energy Fund. From there, we came to council last June, and we asked council to approve setting up the K-Pub Public Facility Corporation. We filed an interconnection request with ERCOT in July. And then we completed our application to the Texas Energy Fund, and we received notice in August that out of 125 notices of intent that were filed, 72 applications that were submitted, K-Pub was one of 17 applications that was chosen to advance in the Texas Energy Fund loan process. Our application is the only municipality that was chosen, and we also are the smallest project that was chosen. Moving on to November 2024, our K-Pub Board passed a resolution directing management to pursue power generation, this power generation project. And that resolution is in your packet today. And I really encourage everyone to read it because it's a great, it does a great job of summarizing why our board is supporting this, the, explains the due diligence that we went through, and just how they reached their decision. Last week, the K-Pub and K-Pub Public Facility Corporation Boards approved resolutions authorizing the issuance of debt. Those resolutions were approved with a five-zero vote on both of them. And that brings us to tonight. Moving on to project funding, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about how the project will be funded. So I'm gonna start with saying that what we're looking at here is something that you'll see referred to on another slide as a deposit to project fund costs. And that means exactly what it sounds like. It's really where we started developing our funding model. We were looking at it in terms of how much is this gonna cost to buy the equipment, to construct it, to pay for the engineering, those things. So we'll get into some additional financing terms like premium discount, par, and then some of the subsequent slides, but we're just talking about project costs to start with. So we're currently estimating that our project cost is gonna be between 160 and 165 million dollars. What we are bringing forth tonight is something called a parameters resolution. It's kind of a not-to-exceed idea, and we'll talk about more details there. But on the advice of our attorneys and our financial advisors, the parameters price should leave a little bit of room in case something unexpected comes up. So the parameters resolution that's in your packet is based on this 175 million dollar project cost. From there, we got the 175 million. We're saying that 60% of that 175 million parameters cost would be funded through the Texas Energy Fund. So, and specifically, the Texas Energy Fund is a loan from the Public Utility Commission of Texas. That, that funding has a 3% interest rate. This was a fund created by voters and approved by Texas voters in November of 2023. The Public Utility Commission set up the fund in 2024, has a 20-year repayment term, and included in the Texas Energy Fund, not part of what you're looking at today, but they also have a program for a completion bonus grant that we expect to be eligible for, and that would give us about a $10 million grant. The other 40% of the funding is gonna come from tax-exempt revenue bonds. Tax-exempt revenue bonds have a current market rate of about 4.5%, 4.6% as of today. Rates have been falling recently, especially this week. But the bonds would be sold through a negotiated sale that is scheduled for April. And we have kind of a lot of terms and names and agreements going on in this financing structure. So we have this transaction diagram here that I'm hoping may help a little bit with the understanding. As you can see, the big blue box is the newly-created entity called the K-Pub Public Facility Corporation. And so that is the entity that will actually own the plant and will borrow the money. The green boxes on the top are the lenders, so the Public Utility Commission for that 60%, and then the open-market bonds for the 40%. And then there's also another layer of legal structure there, creating a trust for some extra certainty around the flow of the funds. On the right side, you'll see K-Pub and our almost 25,000 customers. And so the way this would work is K-Pub will buy power from the Public Facility Corporation through a power sales agreement. This is very similar to the power sales agreements that we have currently in place that Mike just described with CPS Energy and numerous others. So this structure fits easily into K-Pub's existing reporting structure and rate structure where we pass on the actual cost of power as part of our rate. And our attorney will go through some more specifics, but note that this power sales agreement is what creates an unconditional obligation to pay and help secure that debt. Okay, moving on to some of the more technical financing terms. Okay, so we've been working with, closely with our financial advisors, specialized public finance, and Stephen Adams is here throughout this process. And so the resolution that's being considered tonight is a common way to approve financing and is something that the city does as well, and this is the idea of that parameters resolution. And you can think of it kind of similar to locking in a mortgage rate. So we need to get approval before we issue debt, but we're not exactly sure what the rate is gonna be on that day. So we ask for approval up to certain parameters. So as we discussed before, the parameters include the, let's see, I'll point this out. You can see this, well, maybe not. The deposit to the project fund that we were just talking about of 175 million is shown down kind of towards the bottom right. So we are expecting the cost of the project to be between 160 and 165 million. We're asking for the parameter up to 175. And then from there, you can see various other ins and outs, premiums, discounts, capitalized interests, and we can go through those in, you know, in detail if needed. But anyway, basically, those work together to create a par value or face value that's almost 181 million. But there's the, the sources and the uses of the funds shown there. Another part of the parameter is the interest rate. So luckily, on the Texas Energy Fund side, we know that that interest rate will be 3%. We don't know what the open-market interest rate will be, so we've set the parameter at 6.5%. Again, 4.6% is what we're at today. And then on maturity, we've put that at 25 years. Again, we're coming in at less than that. The Texas Energy Fund is a 20-year term, and the open-market debt, we're talking about a 20-year repayment, but we don't start until 2027. So that stretches it into 22 years total from when the debt is issued. All right. And next, I'd like to introduce our bond counsel, Arthur Kimball Stanley from Norton Rose Fulbright, and he's gonna walk us through some resolutions.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, council members. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I think the, the best way to summarize what we're doing this, what we're proposing to do this evening is to talk about what happened on Friday when K-Pub and K-Pub Public Facility Corporation both adopted resolutions with respect to K-Pub Public Facility Corporation authorizing its officers to move forward with the financing to engage both TEF and the capital markets to, to issue debt, to prepare an official statement and enter into a bond purchase agreement with, with underwriters. As, as Amy mentioned, the bonds that will, will be issued, both the TEF and on the open market, are gonna be secured by a power sales agreement. The counterparty to the power sales agreement is going to be K-Pub. And so the K-Pub resolution authorized K-Pub to enter into that power sales agreement. It also, because K-Pub's power sales agreement is gonna be the main security for these bonds, it authorized K-Pub to participate in preparing the official statement describing the, the bonds. It'll be used as a marketing document for the bonds, and authorized K-Pub to enter into a continuing disclosure agreement. So bondholders can continue to get information about the, the K-Pub electric, retail electric distribution system that, that is where ratepayers are paying for the power delivered under the power sales agreement. What's happening this evening, or what we're hoping happen, happens this evening, is that the Public Facility Corporation will be authorized by the city council to, to move forward and, and issue that debt. Chapter 303 of the Texas Local Government Code requires that prior to issuing debt, a local, a public facility corporation get the authorization from its sponsor. In this case, the sponsor is the city council. So the, the exhibits to the resolution that you all will be approving are, are the resolutions that were adopted on Friday, and you are essentially authorizing the, the actions describing those resolutions to, to move forward. Do you have any questions about all of that?
Any questions?
Y'all done a good job bringing us along all the, all the way through, I think. So, so I think we're pretty well prepared.
Great. Thanks very much.
Okay, let's skip through these couple of slides. I'm gonna finish up with a look ahead at the project calendar. So if the funding is approved, our next step would be to finalize a lot of contracts in the next month or so, hopefully this month. And then we're looking at closing on the financing in April and May, both the Texas Energy Fund and the negotiated bond sale. From there, we'd go to a full notice to proceed at the beginning of June, and that's where construction is mobilized, equipment's delivered, project moves forward, all with the idea of having the commercial operations date happen by June of 2027. So at this point, I'd like to recognize and say thank you to the K-Pub Board, which includes the mayor and our board chair, who's here tonight, Larry Howard. We're able to bring you this resolution tonight because of the tremendous amount of work and support that we've received from them over the last, especially nine months. So thank you for getting us here tonight. Also instrumental in this process, Arthur Kimball Stanley and Stephen Adams. So I want to recognize them as well, true experts in their fields. We have a whole team of people here tonight, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Oh, I would just ditto what Kent said. I really appreciate, and I like the fact that you kind of showed us exactly where you started promoting it and how you walked us through each step. And I feel good that the public has gotten that as well. That was one of our, you know, concerns and hopes is that, that what we hear first would be translated very well to them, and I think it has. So thank you for doing that. I know it took a lot of coordination and time, and do we have a name for this baby yet? I mean, what's the gender? No, I'm just kidding. I feel like it's been a process.
I have some names for it, but they're not, I can't say them. Jeff, any comments?
Golly, Mike, Amy, Allison, I don't know how many times we sat through this presentation, but y'all were all over the community doing it, never missed a beat, everything was well-informed, and I think it's a great opportunity, like we've said in the past, all the councils said in the past, is a great opportunity for Kerrville and the citizens that instead of paying rent, we're gonna own our own house, so to say. And it's, I will, I do want to just ask one question to Mr. Whitler. You said machines, you, you don't have, okay, you don't have to get up there. 115 degrees ambient temperature inside the building, is that with the?
It would actually be warmer in the building. That's, that's outside air at 115 degrees, and they're rated to operate at full load.
Okay.
So in that engine house, it would probably be, you know, 140.
I thought it'd be a little warmer than 115, but I was like, man, it must be nice. So that was, that was my only question or concern about the, the temperature. But thank y'all for everything in the presentations. And Mr. Howard, thank you for your leadership as board president through the process.
Ms. Hughes, did you have comments?
Oh, no, I just wanted to kind of reiterate the fact that from the very beginning, when we started meeting with you, the one thing I asked was to, to get it out there to the public and keep them in the loop, and you've done such a great job at doing that. So I thank you for that.
Well, I, I have a few comments in that I first learned about the details of this project in an executive session meeting at my first K-Pub meeting, which was the day after I was sworn in as mayor.
Welcome to the city.
Thrown in the deep end of the pool, I immediately decided that I needed help. And so I asked Dalton Rice to attend meetings, and I asked Kent McKinney to join me at meetings because it was a little above my pay grade, some of the things that they were discussing. I also wanted to keep this council informed, and I requested, and the K-Pub staff responded by coming and giving you presentations, each of us, presentations, not only in executive session, but their doors were open if you had additional questions. session, but their doors were open if you had additional questions. None of us are surprised about the details. I do want everyone to understand that not all details of this project are yet public. They can only be public after the financing is secured and the notice to proceed is agreed upon. And because it's a competitive market, you can't lay down all the cards. And I have been assured, at the earliest possible time, all details about this project will be made public. I'd like to give Mr. Howard an opportunity to say anything if you'd like. We've spent a lot of time together.
Don't lose this moment.
We've spent a lot of time.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Mayor, we do have one speaker.
One moment. Here's the thing. This is a new direction for K-Pub, one that may have been mauled over for years, but we are at the precipice of getting it done. And the TEF, the voter-approved loan program, as well as management's focus on this issue, is how we got here, okay? There were many, many, many times during our meetings where hard and frank discussions were held by a majority of the board, and yet, together, we all arrived at the same chapter. I can't emphasize what a large departure this is for K-Pub as it has been in the past. Do I think it's the right thing to do? I do. I didn't always think that, but I do. All right, we have someone who has signed up to speak.
Nikki Caines.
Nikki Caines. I also want to reiterate my thanks because over the past six months or so, the members in this community, which are in the city and the county, have been placed in a position of having to go against the electric battery systems who claim to be giving us more energy at a decent rate. And when I read through the information and it said it was natural gas-powered, I was like, yes, I like that. Outside of Kerr County, I guess that's because it needs, you said it needed to be near a connection?
Needs to be near, not only transmission connections, but also natural gas supply.
Okay, okay. Does that put Kerr County, Kerrville, in any kind of a weird position where taxes are going to be going to that county or anything where that is going to be built?
Our project will be tax exempt, so we won't be paying taxes somewhere else.
Okay, great. And again, the information said it was going to be like 181. Now it looks like 183, and you said it was going to be brought in at the lowest responsible price. I noticed the gap on this last slide, that it says June of '27, but you said the current contract expires in December. There's a gap there. That's all been looked at and?
Yeah, and we've plugged numbers in, we've gotten price quotes to get a bridge supply agreement for the first five months of June 2027, and we've plugged those numbers into all our modeling, so we factored that in all the plans. We've, in all our modeling, we've been very conservative, so.
Okay, and I agree that as a recipient of that electricity, we like that lowest responsible rate, so we're counting on you, and we know you're acting on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Whitler, anybody on staff? I want to thank the staff at K-Pub for their patience with me as I ask the same question a thousand different ways. I want to thank Mr. Howard's patience with me as I ask the same question a thousand different ways. The problem is, all the spreadsheets in the world, all the bond attorneys, all the public relations people in the world cannot completely predict the future. This will be a hedge for K-Pub, and I think it's going to work, but I can't guarantee it's going to work. I would entertain a motion then on resolution number 082025.
I'll move to approve resolution number 08-2025.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
I'm going to let Kent McKinney second because he attended so many meetings at my request. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes. You've got a little work to do. We'll see you next week at another K-Pub meeting, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7B, Mr. Paxton.
Item 7D is a professional service agreement for SafeBuild for third-party plan review and inspections for the Development Services Department. That'll include building inspections and Fire Marshal's Office. Occasionally, as needed, we have projects that are beyond our normal scope that we typically have seen or are comfortable with, and so we outsource some of those plan reviews and occasionally inspections as well.
Mr. Paxton, other departments do something similar, if I remember correctly. The engineering department does.
Yes, that is correct.
Many of the departments hire specialists or consultants to aid in the performance of their duties. Is this along that line?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
I asked a question of Dalton. Approximately, how much are we talking about here? And so I'll ask you the same, I mean, a guess, in a given year.
It depends on the project. The plan review is based on the value of the project, so obviously, scale, the larger the project, the higher the price.
Okay.
Similar, it's not much similar from our permit fee structure. The larger the project, the larger the fees, because we have more inspections and more in plan review.
10,000 plus, something like?
For some of the big projects, the complex projects that we'd be looking at, some could be upwards of 25,000, 35,000, between plan review and inspection.
Okay. Just to know, you know, ballpark.
That's an investment in the safety of the public.
Absolutely.
And it's necessary. I get.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Paxton? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would, I would move to allow the city manager to finalize and execute professional service agreements for third-party building fans and actions.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and passes unanimously. Item 7C, the one we were looking for, Mr. Rice.
All right, I've got this down to 38 minutes and 42 seconds, so.
If you could tell us stories.
We will be brief, be bright, be gone. Good evening, mayor, council. So this is going into some of our economic development functions of the city. I've kind of spoken with each one of you at various points. And instead of talking about the Economic Development Manager, which we will kind of talk about briefly here, I really want to talk about really the city of Kerrville's and city council's kind of priorities regarding economic development within Kerrville. So as y'all know, this is the council priorities that we all sat down and challenged our way through to come up with our, kind of our two-year, or y'all's two-year model on priorities, along with our senior executive team. And this kind of goes into the backstory of this, more specifically into the economic development side, because that's what this briefing is about. So we have the Kerr EDC, which we're going to talk less about this evening, but more so about the city of Kerrville's priorities. And come October of last year, actually, take that back, May, June of 2024, we sat down, we did the priorities, we came up with this. And one of the big things that came out of that was, what are some of the things that we need to do to tackle retail, tackle some of the Kerrville priorities regarding economic development? We'll call it the little stones versus the big stones, and I'll refer to that quite a bit. October of 2024, you know, EDC was, is going through some transitions. They had some staff members leave. Again, this is not about EDC, this is mostly about city of Kerrville. But in that conversation, in that discussion, there's a lot of questions that were raised. How are we tackling business retention and expansion? How are we tackling small businesses? How are we tackling really retail and what that looks like? So really, in October, sorry, in November of 2024, we started kind of talking through some ideas. What would an economic development manager look like in the city? How do we want to tackle it? What's the relevance of things? So there was a lot of discussion surrounding it, but what kind of came out was, we'll call it the best idea, or the best of ideas, was if the city of Kerrville had an economic development manager, we created this position to tackle small business, retail, dive into the chamber, really focus on the city limits of Kerrville. And we said, you know, what better way to do that than approach the Economic Improvement Corporation, which uses type B sales tax, which we'll talk about here shortly, to get them to pay for this position? So in November, we kind of planted the seed with EIC and kind of made a high-level, not really recommendation at that point, this was just getting some ideas and some feedback from EIC on would they be interested in funding this position, either in part or in whole. We came back to them in February of 2025 this year with really a request, and the request was to fund, based off of some of the feedback and the recommendations from the EIC, to really fund the entire position in full and not take away from the EDC, not take away EIC's contributions to the EDC, which we'll also talk about here briefly. And really, again, not to take away from the EDC's functions, but to be a collaborative effort in the economic development sphere. So some of the challenges or some of the concerns that EIC had raised, and you know, these were some of the ones that we addressed, was, you know, what were the defined roles, making sure that we have a separation, but also make sure that we have collaboration? We didn't want to create silos. You know, we also, there was some concern about, well, we have an economic development division within the city already. Michael Hornis kind of runs one portion of it, and Megan Folkard at the time was the senior management analyst. But that position kind of got repurposed, and so there was concern, where is the city manager going to repurpose this position to do other needs of the city? And so we wanted to make sure that we addressed that that wasn't going to happen. And I think by title and, of course, job description and communication, we can alleviate those issues. Stakeholder resistance, you know, there's a lot of stakeholders involved, both in the EDC side from a regional perspective, K-Pub, the county included. And so making sure that, again, we're not taking away from, you know, from the benefits of what EDC is doing and the relevance of them versus what we're trying to accomplish here in the city limits and tackling council's objectives. And again, silos and compartmentalizations. We're not trying to create two separate organizations here. We're not trying to fight against each other. We want to break down those silos, we want to break down that communication, and we want to make sure that we have a collaboration from the regional side all the way down to, you know, our microeconomy, if you will. And I think all of this can be done by setting clear expectations, you know, making sure we have clear and concise communications and work through it. At the end of the day, the bottom line is, is EIC, while they were not necessarily opposed to it, there was a lot of questions that were raised, is, well, why don't we use, why don't we use sales tax dollars in the general fund to fund the position to generate new sales tax dollars? And so I really wanted to bring that up because I think it's important, and general sales tax revenue goes into a city's general fund to cover various public services, parks and rec, public safety, and I'll show that on the next slide. While type B EDC dollars, which is approved by the voters, which is dedicated to projects promoting business development and community improvements, so generation of new sales tax dollars through type B funds is typically what goes in. So we do about $10.2 million plus or minus on sales tax into the general fund, again, public safety, parks and recreation, general amenities of the community. And the sales tax EIC dollars is roughly about 4.9 with, you know, with a, you know, million-dollar margin of error, you know, give or take, half a million-dollar margin of error. But I think the most important part on this slide is, when we look at the top four sales tax categories, what's number one? 52% of our sales tax base is small businesses, retail, and, and again, kind of scales back pretty heavily back into food service manufacturing information. Why I find that important is, and what this position ultimately is going to tackle, is getting and having those relationships with small businesses. Where are our vacancies? You know, where can we help expand some existing businesses? Having just a broad understanding, which we just don't know, not understanding, knowledge, we just, we just don't know things that are coming in. We have a great ramen place that came in. I found about it from my wife a week after it had already opened. So there's a gap there, and we want to try to close that gap and help small businesses. So this is a great picture. I stole this off the internet, don't know where I got credit for it, but some EDC site. And it really shows the difference between the sales tax dollars of what community development shows, public safety, infrastructure, parks, you know, housing funds, quality of life, you know, public employees, all the things that make businesses want to come here and thrive here and, you know, and excel. And then it dives into the successful businesses side, and then, of course, the economic development side, which is more the type B sales tax dollars, and how do we either generate new sales tax dollars through attracting or through expanding of existing businesses? And so there is a distinct, you know, difference. I kind of already touched on this, why this position is critical. Again, we're trying to tackle the small stones. We've talked a lot about economic improvement grants or facade improvement grants. That's one of the big projects that we want to kick off, is how do we help some of these small businesses, you know, get some of those funds to improve signage, improve curb appeal, or any other number of creative ways that we can do it, using sales tax dollars? And I know there was some concern on using general fund dollars, and that's what we don't want to do. We want to use those sales tax dollars to help small businesses, again, continue to develop, retain, and expand their businesses as they want. Having a dedicated person on this, again, it allows us to, I mean, the bottom line is, is have some control over the city limit side of the retail component and the business retention expansion component, not to take away from EDC, but they're focused on the big stones, the big rocks, which can be expansion of primary jobs, more of the state, you know, the state assets or the state economic development functions. And so, again, not taking away, but enhancing the economic development sphere within, we'll call it Kerr County. And again, EDC focuses more on the regional aspects of things versus what we're trying to do is tackle the city limits. Again, lines with city council's priorities for sustainable economic growth. Again, EDC, Kerr EDC is more of the regional side versus us, which is the more myopic side. So this role, business retention, expansion, you know, attraction, and when we say attraction, these are, you know, finding those restaurants that can fill spaces, you know, in existing, you know, areas, you know, or if you're selling, you know, selling a building that has a commercial kitchen, how do we have that knowledge and, you know, and be able to communicate this with other retail partners through, you know, ICSC conferences and other things? But it's not just about attracting, it is if a business is expanding or wants to move into a larger facility, how do we help them, you know, accomplish that? How do we work with the brokers? How do we work with the businesses? This person is going to have those relationships so we can communicate, you know, those different challenges, whether that's workforce issues, whether that's housing issues, you know, whether that's any number of issues that our small businesses face. By us having a knowledge of that, we can, ideally, we can better communicate, you know, some of those priorities and the directions that we're going. Marketing outreach, but incentives and grant management, you know, this is one area that we have tried, you know, we have, I've mentioned before with Kerr EDC. And again, it's just not, from the incentives and grant side and the facade improvement stuff, that's not really in their wheelhouse. This is more of the, at least here in this city, this is more of the local city council, this is more of the community-based side, and I think we have such a large impact that we can work with the chamber, work with other small businesses to tackle this. Again, talking key responsibilities, I'm kind of beating a dead horse on this, so I can come back to this or if you have questions on it. But really, tonight, you know, the great thing about it is, really, with this position, I have a current FTE that I can realign. I can put the economic development manager in place, you know, relatively quick with the transition period, you know, with the transition period. But one of the things that I think that we're going to kind of bring to city council on this is, right now, we do about $68,750 to Kerr EDC, from the general fund sales tax contributions to the EDC. We do it in quarterly tranches of about $17,000, so we have about $34,000 remaining this year. We're kind of indifferent on it, whether, you know, it's going to take us time anyways to transition somebody in, but no matter what, come the fiscal year, we are going to recommend to council to reappropriate those economic development funds that's going to EDC to continue to support and economic development functions just within the city limits of Kerrville. And so if there is an ask, you know, there can be, you know, discussion on this, you know, this evening, and we can all, or we can bring it back to you at a later date, but we just wanted to bring that, that potential request or future request to city council. We also plan on re-engaging with EIC. As we get more data, as we get more information, quantifiable and qualifiable, we plan on re-engaging with EIC to show them the benefit and the value of re-engaging with EIC to show them the benefit and the value of this position in hopes that they use, you know, type-B sales tax dollars to fund this position for the future, so we can offload that off of the, the general fund. And with that, I will take any questions.
Four questions, I want to add a comment or two. At the Economic Development Summit during the State of the City, I stated fairly clearly that while the efforts of the EDC are appreciated and effective, we need an economic development program within the city limits that focuses on the businesses that are here, the ones who've been playing by the rules, the ones who've been employing people, the ones whose economic growth would benefit the entire community. Not only is that my belief, that's something I campaigned on. I specifically said, what about the people who are here? Like you, I have twenty-four thousand bosses. Like you, they want to know what we're doing for them. I applaud the EDC for what they've done. Some of these things will help change our economy, but so will the hundred or two-hundred small businesses that hire most, hire and employ most of the people in this community. And this will change the approach to economic development in our community, and it will also help grow our economy. I, I know there are still things to wade through with the EDC. I know there are things to wade through with the EIC. I served on the EIC. Some of the things I finally wanted from the EIC passed by one vote. EIC is an independent body, as it should be, but if we make the case to them about what we want to accomplish with this new idea for local economic development, I think we can pass it by more than one vote. And with that, any questions for Mr. Rice?
On the, the slide you had for the role of Economic Development Manager slide, that one. So do you know, do you have an idea what percentage each one of these responsibilities, business retention, business attraction, and all those others, like is downtown and Main Street development a percent, like a twenty percent, thirty percent, five percent out of that, that job description that you would put together for this manager?
Yeah, we typically don't put percentages in job descriptions, but, but to answer your question, like the downtown Main Street, you know, looking at this from a, we'll call it a large, you know, picture point of view, you know, over sixty, seventy percent is going to be focused on the entire community. We don't want to narrow it down to just the TERS or even just the potential of the Main Street corridor.
Right.
However, just the natural progression of business retention, expansion, relationships and development, there is going to, you know, be, you know, anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five percent, that is the, the Main Street and downtown kind of corridor section, that there are going to be the liaison, you know, kind of with the TERS and with the Main Street Advisory Board, um, you know, as this develops.
Yeah, because it looks like your first one would really be your priority one. I mean, that's the business retention and expansion. That's what we've, you know, spent a lot of time.
Correct. And really, there's no, there's no kind of priority in this.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's no priority as far as this section.
Even if I'm interested, okay.
Because, you know, grant, incentives and grant management is, I would almost probably put number two to a certain extent, depending on, on, you know, you know, facade improvement grants. So each one of them can be weighted based off of the needs of city council, based off those priorities, and, and this will pivot and change as, you know, the strategic objectives, you know, change within the city. Yes, ma'am.
This is an item on our agenda tonight because I felt this was a discussion we needed to have in public, at a public meeting. And, uh, every step of this plan will come back to us for approval and for refinement. But to have these ideas and not have them in front of the public, I thought was a problem. And so that's why I've asked Mr. Rice to include it tonight. Mr. McKinney, anything?
Oh, I think the KEDC's done a great job, Gil Salinas did a super job, and we got a lot of, uh, you know, new jobs, new, you know, but that, like, uh, those are the big rocks that Dalton described. And I know they gave some lip service to do in business retention and expansion and whatever, but they never really had time for it. And so, uh, so I'm not really faulting them, I think the, the overall success was, was very, very good, but we have had a hole that we need to fill. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of ways to skin the cat, I suppose, but this certainly is a reasonable one. And I think, uh, EIC should be, in the end, should be supporting this position as a, as a business development thing and certainly would be in, in their, you know, within their remit to, to participate, so. And it's, uh, you know, we can try anything and see, you know, and make it work, and for some reason it doesn't, but we can, you know, we can tweak it, but I think this is a good suggestion to, to try to make a better, uh, effort at helping the, the local businesses.
Well said. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Rice. I, I like, uh, like a multiple-part television series to be continued.
So we, we don't need to take any action tonight.
No, sir, just wanted to put this stuff in front of you. Really, the funding piece is going to be that kind of future action, but we're indifferent about that one.
This had originally been part of a workshop agenda, since it was the only thing on the workshop agenda, I thought we'd.
That's good, because we have a lot of time to do it tonight in the regular meeting.
Yeah, better served not having a workshop, having that. So to be continued, we'll have further updates and every step along the way, not only will the council be involved, but the public will be involved. I see no reason to go into executive session. Are there items for future agendas?
Um, I don't know if it would need to be an agenda, but I would like to talk about fees for tables and chairs downtown.
Yes.
And we may solve that before the next even meeting, just, uh, as far as a common sense approach to business owners who invest in tables and chairs, and maybe they get a break.
So want to understand this is in the staff, at the staff level now, but may come to council, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it is.
You'll keep us in the loop?
Absolutely.
Any other items for future agendas? All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at eight-thirty-seven.